Okay, starting a little early this evening, just for the public's interest. We had started this meeting a little early today due to the fact that Sheriff Evangelitis had asked us to do so in order for him to be available to present a citation to the members of the 250th Anniversary Committee. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts on both ends, that didn't necessarily come to pass. So I believe that that event, the presentation of a citation for the 250th, will happen at a later meeting this month.
Thank you.
That would be, of course, hoping that both sides had a schedule that would work. Sheriff Evangelitis, of course, is a very busy person and events kind of filled his schedule. So that was, that is under new business and obviously that is something that would be put off, and that is the reason for us having decided to post an earlier meeting for this convenience. Moving on, looking for public comment, it looks like we are the only public available. So let's go to September 16th, 2024, meeting minutes. Those are before you.
I move the approval of the September 16th, 2024, meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the 20, 24, September 16th, meeting minutes for public release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have now on the table, September 16th, 2024, executive session. These meeting minutes will not be for release at this time.
I move to approve the September 16th, 2024, executive session meeting minutes, not for release at this time.
I'll second it.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for September 16th, 2024, executive session, but not for public release. Any questions or discussion on these minute meetings, meeting minutes? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You must vote. Moving on to September 17th, 2024, Site-Specific LLC Miracle Recreation, Eye Plains Park, presentation. We are looking for approval of those minutes and for public release.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from September 17th.
Second.
Your motion made and seconded to approve the September 17th meeting minutes as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, I was not present at that meeting. Moving on to September 27th, the interim building commissioner, where there was an appointment of an individual to act as the commissioner, building commissioner for the town of Barry.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from Friday, September 27th.
I'll second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the September 27th meeting minutes for where an interim building commissioner was appointed. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving through that. Okay, now, I think, let's see what's next on our agenda here. Busy, busy agenda here. I don't know if I have that right in front of me, I should. Do you have a comment? I do, I do, I just, okay, we're moving to the town administrator report at this time.
I'd like to say that I'm happy to announce that we've received a park grant of $100,000. A big thank you to Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for helping us submit our applications. Mr. Dickson and myself had many meetings with them, working on this project, and I also had to do a couple mandatory workshops in order to, you know, make sure that we qualified for the grant, have to make sure you go to those workshops. The other thing I'd like to put, the senior center director and myself, I'm working on a transportation grant with MARC, that's the Monticicid Regional Transit Authority, we're working with them, and we're hoping we meet weekly for this grant, because it helps all the necessary information that is needed. This grant, if we receive, will help the transportation, they'll help the seniors plan grocery trips, pick up medications, do regular errands, anything that they need for transportation, especially since our pharmacy is no longer there, and just in general, just everyday things that they need. So we're working really hard to do this grant, we meet with Bruno every Thursday.
What is, what is the cycle for the grant? When would we know?
So, we're in the process of doing surveys, and, you know, any grant that we actually do, there's a lot of work that's put into all these grants. This grant is a weekly grant that we meet with Bruno, and we talk about what our needs are for the senior centers, what types of transportation are we looking for, what are the busiest days, and other things that go along with it as well. Surveys we're going to be putting out. So November, I believe, is when we have to, which he's going to submit it for us, so hopefully soon after that, crossing my fingers that we will end up getting this grant with the help of, of MARC. And my last thing is, I spoke with Markham, Markham is the one that's doing our fraud assessment, and everything's going well, and he's hoping to, they're, I should say, they, are hoping to have our fraud assessment report completed within the next few weeks. The report will help with the data analytics for us, helping us provide where our weak spots are and where we have to improve upon. And when that, when we do receive their report, Mr. Dickson and I will be sitting in on that with Markham. We started it in the beginning, so all that will be coming to light, and it will be for public view, obviously, the cycler will see it, and then take it from there and see where our weak points are.
Good.
I'm glad to see that's finally behind, because it's been part of our management letter for well beyond the years when I joined the board, so I'm happy to see.
So the good thing is that will be off of our, it's working on.
Management letter, I mean, there may be other things on, but at least that's off.
Yes.
One thing, though, I would not let, let this timeframe go by without congratulating you, Tammy, and also John and others who participated in working on the playground project, that I think we've all dedicated a lot of effort and time on, but the grant itself is, something is a surprise. We were not thinking that that was going to be part of our opportunity. I congratulate you, Tammy, on, you know, getting in there and really putting the elbow grease to that.
I also want to put a big shout out to Mary and Ginger, who has been a big part of helping us with putting the documentations. There's so many documentations, as I'm sure you could agree, that we had to fulfill, we had to reach out, we had to do deed receipts, we had to do a lot of things just to get this together.
When do you expect that you would be entering into an agreement with the, with the vendor that I know that we've chosen?
So we are going to have to, you guys have to approve that, it'll be up to you for your approvals. We can do that, I don't think it's on this one, maybe at our next meeting, we can go ahead and do that.
I know that we, I know that we want to make sure we have a specific timeframe, because you and I both know we have to have this finalized by December 31st and.
For, for, absolutely. And we also have to make sure we're following the guidelines.
Absolutely.
With what they, so the mandatory workshop that I just had actually, a couple, last week I had, I think it was Wednesday, they really went into a lot of information of submittals as to when we can actually start purchasing the equipment, and you have to really make sure that you are following it correctly, so.
Do you imagine, as we, as we think of this, I know that we have some work that we need to do to get prepared for the equipment, we have other things that we have to do, you know, after to sort of put in the, I don't know what it's actually called, I'll call it tailings, but it's some sort of a product that needs to be placed in there, and I guess we're going to be doing that as well.
Right, so July 1st, we can start our construction and start tearing it down, making sure all our equipment comes onboard and.
So we can't start anything until July 1st?
I will double check if we can start tearing it down or not. I know we can't purchase anything until July 1st.
Okay, until July 1st, okay.
I, I think there's a chance we can do anything as long as it's not a direct expenditure.
Exactly, because, yeah, we wouldn't get.
If we were going to do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, there'll be some questions about that as we move forward and so on, but again, my congratulations to you and my thanks for the whole community, because this is something that, you know, we've all been committed to and worked on, and never did I believe, okay, how about you, that we were going to get a park grant.
Me either.
For this work.
The town's very fortunate, they, you both, with your expertise on the grants and everything, you know, thank you both as well.
So just to say, good job.
Yes, excellent.
It was a very exciting day when we got that.
Should be, should be.
And obviously, as we, as we continue to, to work, to work on that and so forth, is, that's a lot of work for us and a lot of work for some people that will hopefully be volunteering to help and assist, but I continue to always be concerned about where are we with our, we know, we know that there are all kinds of interesting things that are coming on our table, and we're saying, uh-oh. And we're, we're, we're going to be negotiating a new contract at Spectrum as ours is expiring in the end of this year, which is December 31st. We know that we need legal assistance to do that, to ensure that the rights and so forth of all of our people in the community are honored, so I worry, I worry about that. There's nothing cheap about finding an attorney who can walk us through a complex situation like that, so. I know, I keep bugging you about our, how much, how much, how much, how much do we spend, how much do we have, and I know you're just as concerned as I am. So thanks again for the grant, $100,000 is amazing, and more than, more than we hoped, could have hoped for early on. So thanks for that, Sammy, and I know how hard you worked on it.
Yeah, it's still, it's definitely an ongoing process, but it's going to be worth it, so.
And, you know, I, I don't know how many times I was up there to, to there, talking with different people about different things and, and John, and I feel sadness that we couldn't get involved at the Rice Park at this point, but you know, what we're doing is so much more than I thought we would be able to do, so.
I still, still hold out hope for Rice Park as we work through everything.
Yeah. Okay, is that, is that it for you?
That's it for me.
Okay, moving on then, let's go, any select board reports?
No more training I have to say, was coming forward with Tammy anyway, so we've gone on with this, no sense in talking about it twice.
I, I certainly would just like to, again, commend not, not you, only you, Tammy, but everybody within the organization that works at this particular facility and has the responsibility of responding to public records requests, not only, you know, from local citizens, which are, which come and go, but also from other state agencies and others. This is just last week's. We have had to redirect some people from one position to another position in order to just, you know, do copying and to support, to support our obligations to respond to our, to our citizens and other federal and state agencies that are requesting information from us. Admittedly, it has been a little overwhelming for the last probably two months, and.
To already full schedules.
Yeah, it's, it's.
By the way.
It's a little bit burdensome, but everybody understands that the, the rights of the public are important to us, and we'll do everything we can to comply, but just to let other people know, some people have been taken off job one to do job two, and so we're a little slower on some of the other things that we're working on. I really do want to also commend the town clerk. She is in the midst of a national, okay, situation with, with voters, and now she's also spending a whole lot of time with records requests as well. So it's really burdensome for her team as they put together what is always a very safe and responsible time for our ballot in, in the town of Barry. So just wanted to let people know, if we're a little slow on something else, we're working very hard, and many of you are working double hard, and in, in not only on your current job, but also on other obligations.
And also, just want to make a big note too, on our finance team as well, because this is the time when they're supposed to be trying to close our books, and we have free certification, the cash, free certification cash, our tax rate recaps, there's so much more that goes beyond, behind the scenes that is very difficult.
And we worry about tax rate, setting the tax rate is something we need to do by the end of November, and I'm probably being a little close to the edge with the end of November.
I think with some moving around of people and hoping that we can conquer that.
So, at any rate, thanking you, Tammy, and all, all the team that has been working together to, to make this happen. So at any rate, moving along.
Just say for.
National Grid guy?
Yeah, we don't.
Before, yeah, just on select board reports, just I know some people are following what's happening with the DPW, you know, our commission has met, there is an interim DPW superintendent, Tom George, and we have, you know, interviews lined up that everyone will be working through and, you know, to fill the department back out.
Yeah, and I think.
And I appreciate, oh, just.
Some people have asked to come to the select board to ask questions about it, and I have, in writing said, recommended that they go to the DPW commission meeting, because that's where the decisions are actually made. We are just part of the commission, we're three members of a nine-member commission, so just, we'd be happy to try to answer questions, but understand, we do not have the authority by ourselves to make a management decision for the commission, just to let people know that.
We are moving forward in a positive direction, though we have quite a few applications, is that right?
Yeah.
And, and sort of to echo what Tammy said about everyone up here working very hard, everyone at the DPW who's really, you know, stepped in, and we appreciate everyone, you know, pulling together through this.
Okay, did no correspondence, or was there any correspondence?
No.
Okay, so I did that one, now we're just at six o'clock, perfect, so we're ready for the public hearing, and I would make a request that we vote to open the public hearing for National Grid Joint Identical Point, poll locations on Hubbardston Road. Those in favor? I should get a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, seconded?
Seconded.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Who made the motion?
I did.
John did, yep.
Okay, so the public hearing with National Grid is open, I believe we have a representative from National Grid here?
We do, good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
I'm good, how about you?
Good.
We'd like to install one pole in the town right-of-way pole 29 on Hubbardston Road, it's for a new house that's being built back there, and we tap it off in or anywhere else, this customer's going to lose power a lot, because it's going to push through the trees and, when it comes down, it's going to come down and lose its power.
I know that one of our board members had the opportunity to interface with National Grid employees.
I believe, you will?
I am not.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry, all right. Yeah, I spoke to him on Saturday, I believe, he was nice enough to get back to me on, you know, Saturday, and he explained to me what was going on, basically, the existing poles, they're going to stay, and you were just putting one before pole 29 in order just to stay, basically, with the driveway line and not going into the woods, and that's, and there's no real changes or anything like that, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here to, from the public to speak?
Oh, there we go.
On the utility pole?
Oh, no.
Oh.
It appears that we have no public comment on this pole change or addition. It certainly doesn't seem to disrupt the right-of-way, or it seems to be an improved opportunity for the person who will be utilizing power, so.
Yep.
Vote? Yeah, I, I move to approve the utility pole location on, for utility pole on Hubbardston Road.
I'll second it.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the request of National Grid to put in an additional pole in Hubbardston Road. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much, good evening.
You too.
Three minutes.
We passed public comment, no one was here, so now you're here for public comment, I would think.
Yes, please. My name's Christine Bolino, I'm here on behalf of the Women's Alcoholic Anonymous Meeting that was being held at the Barry Senior Center, and knowing that the board sets the policies for the town builders, we are requesting if we could pay a reasonable fee when the keypads come in to cut out the overhead for having an employee to open it. We were paying $25 a week for nine years, and that's how long we've been there, and we'd just like you to have the consideration that we understand that there's overhead and things like that. The meeting that I attended, that was a town administrator, the director, and a select board member, they come up with $75 a week, which is, we just can't afford that, so we're just asking if you could allow that to happen.
Okay, so we certainly will consider that and have conversations with the Council on Aging Group, and appreciate you coming and, you know, presenting your case, because obviously that's how we figure out stuff and hopefully make better decisions. Have you been, have you relocated to a place where you're able to?
We're temporarily at the Legion Post.
Okay.
But that's not for the long term, you know, the senior center's at home, so, thank you so much for your time.
Oh, no, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
A policy that I don't, that hasn't come to us yet formally, so we'll be looking at.
So she is right, so I will, I just want to speak on behalf of two, she's, she's 100% right, and I, Mark is actually there as well, the culture, the COA mentioned a waiver form, and they were all in agreeance to possibly a waiver form for them as well, so it's definitely something we are going to definitely look at, and we are taking into consideration for all that, and so, we just have to get with, we get with the boards. It's, um, very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you mind if I put off signing the November 5th warrant and so forth at the end of the meeting, because it seems like it's a long process, I have to read the entire warrant?
No, she said you just, you just have to read.
This right here?
The very beginning, yeah, but you read the heading, the very beginning.
Okay, don't have to read the summaries?
Then she said the summary, but the summaries were very long.
The summaries are like pages and pages and pages of law.
We can take turns reading.
I mean, I, I mean, you could maybe, maybe mention the, the questions.
Okay.
And then, because I'm going to attach.
Even if I have to read that, it's way better than reading this.
Oh, gosh, yeah, you have a copy, I shrunk a version in your packet.
Okay, thank you. So I just think it'll be easier for people sitting here and listening to that if they wanted to go off and do something else.
Okay, so the summaries that are in this packet, not the entire?
Yeah, and even that's a lot. Okay, moving along to discussing and approve the Municipal Resources Inc., MRI contract for internal and external candidates for our search for the police chief. We have.
Fire chief.
Fire chief.
Somebody don't know.
I was looking at you down there and I'm saying, okay, no.
Surprise.
Sorry, the fire chief. And obviously, we're, we're, we're probably going to recommend that we look at internal and external candidates, and, and we have a comprehensive agreement that we have discussed, and Tammy has met with the principals of the MRI group, and it appears that it will be a cost of about $14,995 for us to do internal and external candidate search. That would be her recommendation to us, and so we're open for discussion for whether we should just stay internal or whether we should do both.
So I will say, I'll just add my thoughts, so we can do internal, that's $9,995, and we could go that route, and then if we don't find anyone internally, then you'd have to go back out and do externally, that would then be $13,995. But realize, we have to pay for advertisement, we have to pay for the assessments, so if we do it all together at once, it'd be $13,995, we do the whole pool, internal, external, and then you're saving on your advertising, you're saving on your assessments, because we're just doing it at one time. Again, those are two options, you can either do internal first, or you can do both internal, external, that gives to the select board.
Well, I personally would feel very comfortable doing internal and external right off the top, because it's important for us to get the best candidate we can and to do so in an expeditious way. I think, you know, doing it two different times, we're talking going out six months rather than three, and I think that we're better, we're better off to look internal and external, and I mean, there's no question that internal candidates in a way have a leg up, but external people would have to, you know, it's very typical to have internal and external candidates reviewed at the same time. That'd be my point of view of it.
I, I would agree, time's not really on our side, so I think it would make sense to get the, the largest pool we can get, so we can make the best decision we can for the town.
Yeah, my thoughts as well, yeah.
I guess then we would move to approve and to follow the recommendation of the town administrator, to look to Municipal Resources Incorporated, MRI, a contract to assist us in the search for the fire chief, open position due to the resignation of Mr. Rogowski, who will be going to Keene, New Hampshire as the assistant chief, and that we would be able through this contract to look at both internal and external candidates, they would do the advertisements, and they would do all of the reference checking and so forth, and that would cost us $14,995.
The advertising, the reason why we do pay for the advertising on top of, so that is additional, that's why I say it's smart for us to do it one time versus two times.
Okay, so that's probably about the $1,500 or something?
I, whatever, I don't know how much it's going to cost for that, but they, I don't know where they advertise, so, it doesn't say.
So we need a motion to?
Yeah, I would make that motion to advertise internally and externally through, to enter into agreement with MRI to advertise internally and externally.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to interview, to, to accept the Municipal Resources Incorporated contract that they presented to us for the purposes of providing us with an internal and external candidate review for the fire chief's position in the town of Barry. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that will, that will be a busy time. Discuss, a discussion and approval of interim fire chief contract. I personally am not prepared to, to approve an interim fire, interim fire chief at this time. I'd like to have more opportunity, not only to discuss with the current fire chief and others, before we move forward, offering a contract at this time. I know we've got several names that are floating around out there, but we've got to do a little legwork, I think, at least that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I don't know, if we, do, do we have a recommendation from?
So I'm going to tell you about the two, no, I think, so there's two, there's two options right now that I, we have come up with, Mark and I met with someone today, and also MRI had given, they can give us a retired senior fire chief. So I'm going to do the MRI first with the senior retired fire chief. If we go ahead that route, it's obviously very pricey, it's going to really hit our budget, it's going to hit us hard. It's $102.55 per hour, $155 a weekly for expenses for food and every, you know, traveling, on top of them getting a vehicle, and that's just like 16 hours, and it's just administrative. Okay, so that's one option. The second option is the other person that we met today, they would do it 2024 hours, they would go with the rate of what the fire chief is right now, they would be like, if there's a fire, they're not just administrator, they're also a fire, you know, like they partake, right, they partake in everything, they don't need a vehicle, half that money could actually even pay for the MRI that we're going over for the fire chief. So there's two, there's two options, those are your two options. You may want to do references, I, I'm not sure, that's again up to you three, what exactly how you want to go, what route, but those are our two options.
Well, we are simply in the, in the MRI thing, we're assigned a person, correct?
We're assigned, yes.
Yeah, and I'm, I, I would like to have the opportunity to at least have some idea of who we're getting, and, and.
There is, they did give us a resume and everything with the person that they did pick out for us. And we also have to look at our budget too, though, our budget's really going to go skyrocketing.
We, we expect, okay, so the chief is with us until the end of October, I believe?
Uh, November 3rd.
Fourth, third, fourth.
November, okay, say November 4th.
He did make a comment, I believe, that he and me, Murray, that he could even have like a week transition, you know, whoever ends up coming over.
Yeah, so, so if we ended up with, okay, that's November, so we should have, we should be advertised by then, don't we?
So tomorrow, that was said in the contract.
Yeah, so we should, we should, they should have advertised. So then it's a, they have all of November, December, hmm, not a good month for a lot of work, but, and then we have January, so I would think by the end of January, we'd be pretty close to naming somebody, wouldn't you?
Yes, I, if.
I mean, so we're talking about whoever we get is three months, three or four months. Okay.
My, my thoughts are, we got to get, you know, we got to move on this quickly.
Yeah.
So, I mean, whatever we can do just to get us across the line.
We're, we're going to have a meeting on, on, on Thursday night.
Thursday night, yes.
Okay, so Thursday night, I mean, we could, we could do a little legwork here before we make a firm and final decision on either and finalize things on Thursday night?
Yes.
Does that work for you, John?
Um, yep, I, I wasn't aware of the executive session unless.
It just came up today.
Right, but there's, there's also interviews at the DPW, so.
How late are those, those interviews? I thought they were, I thought they were just.
I didn't know.
Interview's Thursday night?
Um, that was, one of us was going to.
Is that posted?
No, that's why we're not all going.
That's why we're not all going.
Oh, okay.
I could, I, if I had my phone, I could tell you, but.
Anyway, we'll get that sorted.
John and I will figure it out.
I mean, it just might be that there isn't a select board member at the, at those interviews, which I'm, I know the people who will be there are more than able to handle it without, I don't know.
I just, because I scheduled it today, so I got kind of confused.
Right, right, there's, there's different interviews for different positions, various nights throughout the week.
Yeah.
So, but none of them are, are anything that multiple select board members would be at.
If they're, if they're water, if they're the water department, I'd feel very comfortable. I believe they're inviting one of the people from, who are.
Water ones are on Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Yeah.
So they would be the ones we need Scott for, I.
But I'm, I'm sure they have it all in hand if, you know, if I or Marine or Mark aren't there.
Okay.
And we'll say whichever way we go, they're both will be available. So this one is just pretty much making a decision and approving.
Okay, I believe now that the fire, that the police chief is here to talk a little bit about the Insight Meditation Society requesting a speed limit change on Pleasant Street. I would like it very clear, please, that I do live on Pleasant Street. It is not me who has asked for any change in the speed limit. And okay, in order to take care of my dog or something. So please, this is from Insight Meditation Center, my neighbor, no question about it. And you can speak specifically to their request.
Sure. So I received a request from Insight Meditation Center to, they basically want to lower the speed limit on Pleasant Street, specifically in the area between what would be Ruggles Lane and.
Lockwood.
Or Lockwood and Ruggles Lane and.
Mill Street.
Mill Street.
Which is where, where the bad bridge is, yeah.
Yes. So they are specifically referring to that stretch of the road. Honestly, my recommendation to the board would be to reach out to Mass DOT and request a traffic study. The only other option that we would have is if we could determine that that was a thickly settled area, and then we could make it a twenty-five. But I think that that's.
A stretch.
That would be a stretch. And that'd kind of be, that would kind of be the board and myself stretching the definition of thickly. Thickly settled area to fit a specific, which I'm not in favor, not in favor of playing games with.
What, what kind of timeframe do we talk about when we say, uh, reach out to DOT? Is that something they, they would move relatively quickly on, take six months to do?
Well, I don't think it's gonna be a super fast project. I mean, we did just unfortunately recently have a fatal crash in that stretch of road.
Yes, you did.
That may push things along a little bit, but obviously, the first step would be for you guys to take a vote to request that Mass DOT do a traffic study, and then the town administrator will reach out to Mass DOT or whoever you designate.
As I, as I told you, my worry is always at the other end of Pleasant Street, which is right, you know, when you get to where they, they turn in to go to Ruggles Lane.
Yes.
And you're coming down that hill, and it's a long hill, and you have people are picking up speed, no question about it. And it's, yeah.
Well, I, I don't think there's any question that that stretch between Ruggles Lane and Pleasant, and West Street could be considered a thickly settled. There wouldn't be any stretching law to.
Yeah, well, I think, I think it's really important to understand that people from Grand Hoot Terrace, that's how they come out onto Pleasant Street. That's where the buses come out. That's where parents come out. That's where kids on bicycles come out. Part of the road a lot. I would say that's, that people go too fast there.
But, you know, I am aware that there is a, that Insight Meditation Center or Society does generate a lot of foot traffic on Pleasant Street. Mill Street, you know, Old Stage. So I don't think that it would be a bad idea to have Mass DOT at least look at it.
Yeah, there is a, a ton of foot traffic, some of it mine.
So that would be my recommendation.
Do you feel it's appropriate that we would make any, any recommendation or any vote about the time or what the speed limit is down there, right where, is it Ruggles Street comes out onto Pleasant to, to down to the stop sign? Yeah.
I mean, again, if, if you determine if we wanna go with the thickly settled area, then we, then you, as the board, can make it twenty-five tonight.
Well, it is thickly, thickly settled. There's no question about that.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that. I think that that's a little.
Okay, so.
That would be two separate votes.
So, so do we have a motion to follow the chief's recommendation that we reach out to Mass DOT and have them give us an analysis or a study of that portion of Pleasant Street, which is Lockwood Road to Mill Street?
So I, I mean, I think what will realistically happen is we'll reach out to Mass DOT and they'll say, that sounds nice. Let us know when your contractor does it and you've paid for it, and let us know what they come back with. Maybe they'll do it, but I think it's a good starting point.
Okay.
I think what, yeah, they'll probably say, that's nice. Let us know when you have a traffic study.
Well, I mean, we're, we're limited by the law. I mean, there's only so much that the board can do in the police.
Sounds like you could get a little experience on that, John.
Well, I, I know, you know, we can get traffic counts. CMRPC and other planning organizations will, will sometimes, are sometimes able to cover those and do those. So we can reach out to them, at least to have traffic counts to, to see what our, our, you know, eighty-fifth percentile speeds are, things like that. And, you know, see if it's worth bringing on a company. But I think reaching out to Mass DOT, I think is a good first step.
Would that be a motion?
So yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to, that we reach out to Mass DOT with regard to speed limits and traffic calming on Pleasant Street.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to reach out to Mass DOT to do a traffic study for the area of Pleasant Street from Lockwood Road to Mill Street. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you let the Insight Meditation Society understand that we've made that determination? Also, as we discuss the Pleasant Street issue, knowing or think, believing that the end of Pleasant Street from Ruggles Street to the intersection with.
West.
West Street is thickly settled. So if we determine that it's thickly settled, then that would be a twenty-five mile an hour stretch.
You guys can designate it as a twenty-five mile an hour.
I mean, that's the Ruggles Lane inter and entrance, and it's, yeah.
Down to West Street.
Right.
And I would say that that, that is absolutely thickly settled.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I think for that one, it might be best to post it as, as that specifically, just to make sure everyone on that stretch has a chance. I don't know why anyone would be opposed to it, but maybe have, have a vote on that at the next meeting.
Okay, so you, you mean just put it on the agenda for another meeting? Sure.
Just so that people can see it, we can, you know, express to people that this is something we consider.
What we could do also is we could ask Ruggles Lane School to tell us what they, because they're the ones that have all those parents in and out of there. Grand Hoot Terrace, same thing, lots of people out of there. And then the buses coming in and out of there, you know, on at least a hundred and eighty days.
Yep.
And, and for that area, as far as, you know, other speed measures go, there is a safe routes to school programs that we could look at. Or possibly the district could look at.
Is there any way to look at, see, I mean, when the kids are out running on South Street, I mean, I, I do worry. I mean, I, and they're told single file, single file. And I don't see almost anyone single file. And they're double, they're running double bus, triple bus. And this, and, and the post office is there, and there's just so much traffic. Are, any thoughts on that, chief? I don't know how to make it safer, just, I mean, you know what they do, when, when I drive to Hold in, at, you know, two o'clock in the afternoon? There's, there's sandwich signs that say runners in road, school runners in road. And so you go, oh, okay. And so you're watching for the green outfits. We could potentially ask Quavon to do that. Would that be acceptable to you guys? Or if you don't wanna have a sign, sign up there?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you know, you run into a problem with somebody hitting the sign, and then it's, you know.
Okay. So are you recommending, you wouldn't recommend that?
No, I mean, it couldn't hurt. It wouldn't hurt. I'm just saying, you know, you can't be liable for putting a sign out.
Yeah, I got you.
Having it cause damage.
Okay.
I would just say be cautious about that, as far as them running in the road though.
Yeah.
It's, it's unfortunate, because we don't have a nice wide stretch like one twenty-two A month or holding.
No, we should, and even they have signs up saying.
Yeah, but they also have a, a very well marked breakdown lane.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So we don't have that. That would be great.
So, maybe not a good idea.
But, yeah, I think that stretch would be eligible for federal funds at some point. If we didn't wanna do a TIP project, that could reconstruct the road and add in pedestrian facilities.
That'd be great.
It'd be a long process. It would, you know, take five or six years, but.
I would say, was it ten years ago or so, so the town received a grant to, to at least go through the engineering phase and put in.
I don't, and they didn't, you thought, you didn't.
Yeah, there, there were, there were plans that were drawn up for a sidewalk, I believe it was, which.
It was a while ago.
Yeah, the, the tricky part of that is the right of way was a tricky, was the, just the topography.
Yeah.
So funding wise, where it's just a sidewalk, I don't know that Mass DOT would actually fund it at this point unless you're also addressing bicycle.
Right, right.
Which is why a lot of towns are trying to share these paths, sort of like you see in the middle of Hubbardston.
Yeah.
Cause that will still be funded.
Unfortunately, right by Cooks Canyon where the old town, pound is, there's a big chunk of ledge that would have to be blasted out of there.
Sticks right out there, yeah.
Which, you know, as a TIP project, that portion at least would be covered. The biggest, you know, portion to the town at that point would be design and then right of way.
Cause you've got water going up there. You wouldn't have any sewerage, I don't think. I think, I think Sewerage End, I think, right at Kendall Street, I think. So, and then that this water goes up to high school.
Yeah. That, that's something we should, you know, that could be worth looking at.
Cause that, that is a road that does worry me. I mean, I mean, just because of how, how it's used. I mean, in the summer, it's probably, probably not a big deal, but.
Well, and then just the, just the volume of traffic, you know, during, you know, drop off and.
Pick up.
Pick up.
True enough. Okay, so we have here a special events application for Ruggles Lane PTO for Halloween Family Fun Night and Parade on October twenty-fifth at six fifteen PM. They are seeking approval. They have done the paperwork as necessary. Um, I know that this has been sort of an annual event, and so I look for a motion.
I move to approve the Ruggles Lane PTO Halloween Family Fun Night and Parade for October twenty-fifth.
Second.
The motion made and seconded for the approval of the application for the Ruggles Lane PTO Halloween Family Fun Night and Parade on October twenty-fifth at six fifteen PM. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have another special event. We're looking for approval of the Halloween Trick or Trunk or Treat Hours for Thursday, October thirty-first from five to eight PM. Common Street, sign up is not needed. Just show up and be set up and ready by five PM. That means show up, not if I'm trick or treating, but if I have a car and I'm gonna open my trunk with stuff in it, okay? How much stuff do people really need to bring? Or can they just drop off stuff for somebody else who has their trunk up?
Uh, yes. Traditionally, I think, and I don't wanna speak on the library's behalf, but.
Okay, so they do this. So I'll ask library.
Yeah, um, they have been a drop off point for people that wanna donate.
Stuff.
Donate items, yeah, for, for trunk or treats.
I assume we're still candy, candying it.
Yes. And just to be clear, trunk or treat, you know, there is traditional trick or treating throughout town as well. And we will have extra patrols on and everything, but trunk or treat seems to be very popular as well.
Yeah, I think, I think they do both.
Yes.
And I guess if I were.
For the areas that are.
If I was about ten hundred.
I think Dr. Rob Sarn was pretty happy about it.
So we need a motion?
All right. I move to approve Trick or Treat and Trunk or Treat for Thursday, October thirty-first from five to eight PM.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve not only street Trick or Treat, but also trunk or treat on Thursday, October thirty-first from the hours of five to eight PM on Common Street is the trunk or treat. Sign up is not needed. People can just show up and set up a trunk with candy and, and treats and be ready by five PM on Common Street. We have a motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're good.
Well, it's from the set the time for a holiday.
Yeah. Okay, personnel, we have a wage authorization for Neil Lefebvre from the police department. He's a patrolman, part-time at this point, and he will be scheduled at twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents per hour. And that's the recommendation on the chief, correct?
Yes.
We need a, a, a vote to authorize?
So that's going from part-time to full-time?
No, so he's, he's a lone part-time officer, but he was just certified. So basically, his qualifications are the same as a full-time officer.
Gotcha. Right, cause the states don't require.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, I move to approve the wage authorization for Neil Lefebvre to at twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents per hour, effective October fourteenth.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the wage authorization presented by the police chief for Neil Lefebvre, a part-time patrolman who'll go to twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents per hour. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kaylee Hart of the.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The library director. The library director has indicated a wage authorization for Kaylee Hart, who will go to step four at nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents per hour. Do we have a motion?
So that's a step increase. I move to approve the wage authorization for Kaylee Hart to nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents per hour, effective November fifth.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the wage authorization presented by the library director for Kaylee Hart to go from to back to step four, where she is making nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes our.
Nope.
You have an old.
We didn't do the warrant.
Do your warrant.
Oh, God.
Yeah, you tried to get away with it.
I did try to get away with it.
I knew what you were doing.
Okay. Now, are you gonna give me the warrant to read? And I do beg your indulgence in this. This one's easy.
Oh, okay. Here we are.
These all have to be signed. These are all signed stuff. Okay. This is the warrant for state elections held in the, in town of Barry for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And this is required by William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth. To the constables and the people in the town of Barry, greetings. The name of the Commonwealth to you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the elections to vote at the senior center, precinct one, five five seven South Barry Road, South Barry. Precinct two, American Legion Post two, four fifty South Barry Road, South Barry. On Tuesday, the fifth day of November twenty twenty-four, from seven AM to eight PM for the following purpose. To cast their votes in the state election for candidates for the following offices. Electors of the President and Vice President of the United States, Senator in Congress for the Commonwealth, Representatives in Congress, second district, Counselor, seventh district, Senator, Senator in the General Court, Worcester and Hampshire District, Representative in the General Court, fifth Worcester District, Clerk of Courts, Worcester County, Register of Deeds, Worcester District. Question one, law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of the law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives before May first, twenty twenty-four? Summary, this proposed law would specify that the state auditor has the authority to audit the legislature. A yes vote would specify that the Senate auditor has the authority to audit the legislature. A no vote would make no change in the law relative to the state auditor's authority. Question two, proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives before May first, twenty twenty-four? This proposed law would eliminate the requirement that a student pass the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, MCAS tests, or other state or district-wide assessments in mathematics, science and technology, and English in order to receive a high school diploma. Instead, in order for a student to receive a high school diploma, the proposed law would require the student to complete coursework certified by the student's district as demonstrating mastery of the competencies contained in the state academic standards in mathematics, science and technology, and English, as well as any other additional areas determined by the Board of Educ, Elementary and Secondary Education. A yes vote would eliminate the requirement that students pass the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, MCAS, in order to graduate from high school, but still require students to complete coursework that meets state standards. A no vote would make no change in the law relative to the requirement that a student pass the MCAS in order to graduate from high school.
I mean, I'm the one.
I don't have to read the whole summary?
Yeah.
Just, okay. Um, question three, the law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or House of Representatives before May first, twenty twenty-four? A yes vote would provide transportation network drivers the option to form unions to collectively bargain with transportation network companies regarding wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of work. A no vote would make no change in the law relative to the ability of transportation network drivers to form unions. Question four, a law proposed by initiative petition. Do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or House of Representatives? A yes vote would allow a person over twenty-one years of age to use natural psychedelic substances under licensed supervision and to grow and possess limited quantities of those substances in their home, and would create a commission to regulate these substances. A no vote would make no change in the law regarding the use of natural phyllic, psycho, psychedelic, psychedelic. I should know this from my era, psychedelic substances. Question five, the law proposed. Question five, the law proposed by initiative petition, do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives before May first, twenty twenty-four? Uh, it's a, under the proposed law, if an employer pays its workers an hourly wage that is at least the state minimum wage, the employer would be permitted to administer a tip pool that com- combines all the tips given by customers to tipped workers and distributes them among the workers, including a non-tipped worker. A yes vote would increase the minimum hourly wage an employer must pay a tipped worker to the full state minimum wage implementation, implemented over five years, at which point employers could pool all tips and distribute them to non-management workers. A no vote would make no change in the law concerning tip pooling or the minimum wage for tipped workers. Hereof fail not, hereof fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting. That makes no sense. Okay, okay, moving along, I think that's it. Pursuant to October twenty, uh, today, the date of October, what are we, seventh today?
Today, seven.
Twenty twenty-four, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Barry posting up attested copies of the, of the same in the bulletin boxes in the following locations, one oh five Ruggles Lane School, Town Hall, Two Exchange Streets, Henry Woods Building, forty West Street, first floor, Town Clerk's Office, forty West Street, basement, Senior Center, fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-seven, with, South Barry Road, Bulletin Board, fifty Main Street, Woods Memorial Library, nineteen Pleasant Street. That would be presented to the constable and he or she would have to ensure that all of those postings are made. And then returned to the clerk's office at a time certain that the town works requirement. We good?
Yep.
You just have to make a motion and then you can sign it if you want. We, we make a motion to approve the warrant as presented to us by the town clerk, this date, November seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second. No, you seconded it?
Yeah.
I can hear him.
Yeah, wait a second.
We have a motion made and, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the warrant as presented, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, who's second?
I did.
You did.
Okay, so it looks to me like, um, you will hand us what we need to sign.
Everything's right here, yeah.
Okay.
And it has to be black pen, correct?
At the locations listed.
Uh, I, I think so, do you have black pen?
I don't, I have a blue pen, but that's okay, we can figure it out, I'll, we'll get them. We can sign it.
I used to have black pens here, but...
That's okay, I can sign it. Oh, it looks like we all have blue pens.
Yeah.
You had a black one?
No, that's a red one. You know, a teacher never goes anywhere without a red pen.
Oh, really?
Um, I can, I can run upstairs and go.
Would you mind?
Sam.
You want, you want me to go? I'm faster.
Black pen?
I'm faster, you go to bed, boy.
Before you go, should we adjourn? No pen.
No pen.
We can do that. I, I, I think we've, our business has been completed, then those in favor?
I, I would move to adjourn.
We have a motion made to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we can get black pens and sign.